Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 14, 2009 Planning Commission meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the swearing in of a new commissioner.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to swear in the new member to the commission. This commissioner is replacing Paige Becknoe, who, like I said before, when she stepped down, served us very well, and we appreciate her service. Any opposition? Motion carries. So Ms. Baltimore, will you please swear in our new member?
Yes.
Now, I guess you just do it for planning, or we have to do it again for zoning, or can you do it simultaneously?
I think we can do it simultaneously. As long as you say this is for the Planning and Zoning Commission jointly.
Howard.
You ready, Mr. Dalton?
Sure.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I, Howard Dalton.
I, Howard Dalton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution, laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
That I will faithfully impart, discharge, and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
As a Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding, so help me God.
And understanding, so help me God.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to see that all are present except Mr. Julio Dumas. Item number three, acceptance of minutes from the September 9, 2009 Planning Commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve Barrow.
Second.
Second. Bob, any opposition? Motion carries. Public comment period. This time, I'd like to open the floor to anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment on any item not on the agenda. Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. And I guess as a way of everybody know, this is a Planning Commission meeting. We'll do a joint Planning and Zoning, and then a zoning after this. So I just want to make all the audience aware that we may be here awhile if you're waiting for a zoning item. No one wishing to make a comment? I think Mr. Compton has a short announcement. Ricky?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce the newest member of our Planning and Development Team, Jeffrey Lewenberger. Comes to us with a master's degree in urban planning from Ball State University. He worked for the Baton Rouge Planning Commission and the City of Lafayette. And so now he's in Ascension Parish, and his commute has greatly decreased. And we're super excited to have him here and get him to join our team and work on our comp plan and all the other good stuff we have coming forward.
Thank you, and welcome aboard, Jeffrey. All right. Item number five, public hearing to consider the following family partition. The Reed Rennie property. Lots 6A1A1, 6A1A2, 6A1A3, 13A1A, and 13A1B. Hi.
Hi. Ellen Jackson with McLean &amp; Associates. Standing before you, asking for your approval, this proposed family partition. There were some comments, they have been addressed. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Commissioners have any comments or questions? No comments and questions at this time. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, comment, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions?
With all comments addressed, and this meeting the requirements for a family partition, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion approved by Steve Barrow, seconded by Sherri Slimon. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 5B, the Robert Lazar Jr. property, lots 3A1, 3A2, family partition. Yes, sir.
James Falgu, representing the Lazar family, on the following family partition. There were some comments addressed, according to the setback lines. They were corrected, asking the commission for approval.
Comments, questions by commissioners?
One quick question, James. In our parish write-up, it says the relationship to the owner is not known, as far as who they're dedicating the property to. Robert Michel, is that the son-in-law?
Yeah.
Okay.
No other comments, questions at this time. Open the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve, as it meets the requirements of the parish.
Second.
All right, motion to approve by Sherri Slimon. Who was it? Was it Beverly?
Yeah.
Commissioner Barry. Seconded by Beverly Barry. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number 5C, family partition for Ronald Scott property, lots A3C1 and A3C2.
Once again, representing the Scott family, on the following family partition, the back lot is going to his daughter. Couple comments were made, and were addressed and corrected on the plat, asking commission for approval.
Comments, questions?
Did y'all address the sewer affluent removal for lot A3C2?
It's gonna be through the piping, through the ditch.
Okay.
That's the way it is right now, existing.
No other comments, questions at this time. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions? Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve, as it meets the requirements for a family partition.
Second.
Motion by Steve Barrow for approval. Seconded by Bob. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see, item 5D was pulled before the meeting. Item 5E, Helen P. Gregori, did I pronounce that correctly?
Gregwa.
Gregwa, thank you. Lot C1C2, family partition.
Good evening. Clint Quintmaul, representing WJ Quintmaul Surveyors, asking for planning commission approval on the Helen P. Gregwa partition of lot C into lot C1 and C2. All comments from the Planning Department were addressed and corrected on the plat.
Comments, questions from commissioners?
Yeah, when is the barn going to be removed?
He's in the process of removing. He's waiting for a little cooler and drier weather.
Kinda messy, so.
Same applause to defense, being removed.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions at this time?
Did y'all address the adding the "and maintain" to the reference note for the drainage ditch? It's not on our copy that we have. It was a comment from Chuck. It says, it should say, "All new drainage ditches shall be constructed and maintained by the property owner."
In my family partition block, I have the normal statement that I always put, "Any new drainage ditch required by the subdivision of this property for the purpose of transportation of runoff of sewage fluent to an existing parish-maintained ditch shall be constructed by the property owners." That's the one I've been using.
Ben, was that your comment?
That wasn't my comment. Our standard note doesn't have "and maintain" in there.
Okay.
Oh, he hasn't, so it's been on all of them.
Okay. Well, I mean, just looking at the suggestions from Chuck here, I guess we don't necessarily have to do everything he suggests.
I'm willing to talk to him and get that added, what he wants to do with it.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question, comment to staff. I don't agree with your recommendation. You recommend approval, and I know we are in the process of changing some things, but at this time, the letter of the ordinance would not allow this. So I would disagree with your recommendation, just because there is only one drive on the servicing both lots, and according to the ordinance, one driveway can only service one residence.
The ordinance says that one 20-foot private servitude access can only access one lot. It doesn't say that two driveways can't access that lot. The servitude is for lot C2, and it guarantees that at any future point that front lot belongs to someone else, that back lot will still have an access point to the public right-of-way.
Okay. As I'm reading it, it says the driveway may not be used to service additional lots.
Look, the... Our understanding is that this...
The interpretation that we were working with on the staff level was that a servitude simply guarantees that the lot will have access to the public right-of-way. There's only one case where a 20-foot servitude works, and that's when there's only one lot being accessed via that servitude. The lot that's being accessed through, or with the servitude through it, obviously has access to the right-of-way, because it's fronting on it. The interpretation, I guess, hinges upon whether or not that includes driveways or not.
Well, it goes on, and the private servitude from one to three lots being created or serviced is 40 feet, and we can give a variance, but it says, "However, shall not be less than 30 feet." So even with the variance.
I think that where we're trying to go with this is that it's our interpretation that if a lot fronts on a public road, it doesn't need a servitude to serve it. So our interpretation is that that 20-foot servitude is only serving the lot behind it. The fact that the driveways line up is actually better for the parish, as opposed to having two driveways side-by-side, one inside of a 20-foot servitude and one outside of the 20-foot servitude. Our interpretation is, because that front lot fronts on a public road, it does not need any servitude. It has access. The driveways just happen to line up within the 20-foot servitude. So that 20-foot servitude is not serving the front lot. The driveways just happen to line up. I mean, it's the whole access management standard that we're trying to get to. Why would we want to create a situation where just because the lots are in front of and back of each other, you have to have driveways side-by-side? I mean, the driveways happen to line up, the 20-foot servitude is only serving the lot behind it, and I don't know that we actually discussed this with Clint, but if we want to put a note that says, "This 20-foot servitude only serves lot C2," you know, that perhaps is something we can put on the plat, because that's indeed all it's serving. The front lot can access it anywhere along that front. The driveway just happens to line up with where the other one is accessing, which is actually a benefit to us.
But I believe if we want to make that change, it needs to be changed here.
Sherri, the front lot has access to the road. They don't have to have a 20-foot access. It meets...
I understand, but the one driveway is serving two residences. And then we've held people to this in the past, and if we want to make changes, that's fine. You know, I understand if that's what we want to do, but I think it needs to be changed in the ordinance before we change it, before we make the change and use the change. Otherwise, I think we're getting preferential treatment to someone else.
That's up for interpretation on that.
Bob, may I finish? That is my interpretation.
Yep.
What's the zoning in this, for this plot? Is this, this is rural zoning? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I see that on the paperwork. So what's the, this .5 acre staff, is that, that's acceptable in rural zoning? Wow.
Any other comments, questions at this time? If not, I'll open the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please do so. You have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed.
I have one more comment. We will add this to the subcommittee agenda, and we will talk about this and make any changes that we need to make.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Well, our next meeting will talk about it.
Okay. Comments, questions at this time? What is the wish of the commission?
I will make a motion to deny, because I don't believe it meets the requirements of the ordinance.
A motion by Sherri Slimon to deny.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barry. All against?
I'm against.
All right.
Right, against what?
The motion. I'm gonna say four and against, so. We'll go nays first. Have we got...
That's against the motion? Sorry. Okay.
Yes. Okay, nays on the motion. Okay, we got Bob. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, I'll look nay for this, because I have to agree with the staff interpretation. I think this is splitting hairs over something that is really no relevant.
Okay. Two, any other nays? Okay. Wells. Four, okay. All in favor of the motion?
I'm in favor.
Sherri.
Steve. All right, motion fails four to three.
Then you need another motion.
Correct.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Bob, seconded by Commissioner Wells. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed.
Aye.
I oppose.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries four, three. Approve of the family partition.
Thank you.
Hey, you got all that?
You good? Okay, item number... Yeah. 5F, Mona Stafford bourgeois property, tracks 1C1, 1C2. Mr. Quintmaul.
Correct. We went over the comments and made the changes to the plat. The only issue was that the owner was contacting the health department to figure out what to do with the sewage affluent. He has gone to his neighbors, found out what they were doing. Several of them are going to filter beds and things like that. If need be, he is here, he can get up and further explain. And looking into that, he is still getting in touch with the health department, so they can let him know what he needs to do with his sewage.
Okay. Questions, comments, commissioners? No questions, comments at this time. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Any comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, move to approve by Commissioner Marshon, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition?
I am also resisting the point.
Okay, two.
Opposed as well.
Faro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you.
Item 5G, Blake Mirror property, lots 2A through 2D.
All the comments have been addressed and adjusted on the plat. Two, I guess, important items on this particular plat is, one, the driveway, main access that goes to the core port, and is not used, 40-foot, and will not. Other issue there is added to a 5-foot by 33-foot drainage servitude all the way on the south end of the property, to be on the southwest. They're also gonna have the signature of that gentleman to sign that for sewage purposes and drainage purposes as well. Other than those two items, everything else corrected and adjusted.
All right. Comments, questions by commissioners?
Did we change to where the other lots don't have to have a servitude?
What sort of servitude?
Well, I'm sorry, drainage. I'm sorry. I do see the one on lot 2D. What about 2C and 2B?
In reading the code, it doesn't clearly specify, as far as I can tell, that they require a drainage servitude when there's not an existing drainage in that area. We have the note on there that requires the homeowner, if there is a ditch needed to install it, and if at that time it served more than just that homeowner and served the public, then a drainage servitude could be dedicated.
Okay, so we no longer require one on each lot, on the side or the rear?
Correct. And part of the issue was that we were getting all these little pieces of servitude all over the parish, and they weren't serving any benefit.
So Ben, you satisfied with the drainage in that area, for those four lots?
Yes, ma'am.
What about that shit that's supposed to be removed? Has that been done?
I know he's going to remove it before the final pass sign.
Okay.
I haven't visited the property since, set the pipes.
Okay, comments? Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Open the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward. You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Comments or questions? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Wells, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number 5H, Mary Lobell property, tracks A1A, A1B, A1C, A1D, A1E.
One thing, A1E has been retracted. So even though it's on the agenda, there's not on the plat. It was taken out to reduce the number of lots.
Okay, let's see. What is our, does our... I wanna make sure. Map doesn't show it. Okay.
So it'll be three lots formed out of one, instead of four out of one? Correct.
Correct. All staff, review comments have been addressed. Set iron pipes at the time, and then show setbacks, and all that's been done.
Comments, questions by commissioners? I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Any other comments, questions by commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Move to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Commissioner Marshon, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six, public hearing to consider the following drainage servitude revocation. Partition lots 2B1. Ms. Jackson.
Ellen Jackson, again with McLean &amp; Associates, asking for your approval to revoke the existing 60-foot drainage servitude. A new servitude is proposed and shown on the preliminary plat.
Any other comments, questions by commissioners?
Ben, are you comfortable with this?
Yes, ma'am. This was reviewed by Drainage.
I saw that, yeah.
And they had the authority over it, and they thought it was...
Good answer, Ben. No comments, questions at this time? Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Any comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Slimon, seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seven, public hearing for granting preliminary approval to the following subdivision, Woodgate Town Homes.
Good evening. Brandon Acosta, GWS Engineering. A little background on this, I think some of you may remember. Not everybody was on this commission at the time. This project is approximately two and a half years old. It actually came before you as a contract agreement for a condominium project. Reason we back here is basically due to the housing bubble and the financial market. In that time, and if any of you have written out there, you can see that as one building built, the rest of it completely undeveloped. In that time, the financing on condominiums has basically went to none, but there is a huge market for townhomes, which makes sense, because the bank wants the land, not just the wall space inside the condo. So we did have to make some changes, just because of all the regulations that go with townhomes. So I think we actually... So I think we actually lost, from the original layout, we lost four units.
Check with.
Four, yes. It was forty-eight, now it's forty-four. And then there were all kind of different building lines, stuffs we had to consider under the townhome ordinance. So it's basically the same thing. Tried to make it look as much as possible like it was, but it was kind of difficult. And I'll answer any questions you guys had. I have an old set of plans, if any of you want them, by the way, just what was actually approved. If any of you want to look at them.
Did y'all also do the quarters at Dutch Town?
Yes, ma'am.
You did that one too? Okay.
Yep. Very similar projects.
Yeah, I thought it looked just alike.
They happened to get in just in time and were built before the mess happened.
Yeah, because they are like a hundred percent sold or high ninety percent.
Yes. And this project was just a little behind it, and it, that was it.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please come forward. You have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I have one. By reducing your building line, you're not affecting your road at all.
No.
Emergency vehicles can still get around behind there.
Actually, all the infrastructure's in, drainage, sewer, electricity, and water.
But your road only goes halfway.
Right. We didn't build all the road, built enough road and parking for building number one. She was gonna just build it as buildings were put in, but the road is all staying exactly like it was. This was just simply putting a piece of land on the ground so that unit could be sold with the land, which is what the bank wants in today's market.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Motion to approve, Commissioner Wells, seconded by Commissioner Slyman. Any opposition?
Just a comment. Do we want to include these recommended staff conditions here at the bottom about the setbacks and the walking path and all that?
It is shown as recorded.
I'll amend the motion to approve it with the staff recommendations.
All right. You second it?
Yes.
Okay. Motion was amended to include the staff recommendations, seconded by Sherri Slyman. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number eight, public hearing for granting final approval to the following subdivision, Ascension Commerce Center, first filing.
Yes, sir.
My name is Will Fontenough, I'm with Allen Fairbairn and Associates. What it mainly is, is just an extension of a street. We're not adding any new lots, anything.
Okay, so I note item. Inspection was held, and you have punch list items which will be addressed.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're asking you all for approval, subject to us doing.
Right, okay.
What we haven't finished, we did most of them already.
Okay.
A good many of them.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Fontenough, are y'all adding any lighting out there? It's awful. I can see where it would be very dark.
Not at this time.
Okay. It's not a requirement, I just wondered.
No other comments or questions? Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions, my commissioners? If none, what is the wish of the commission?
Move to approve, conditioned upon the satisfactory completion of all the punch list items.
Second. Motion approved by Commissioner Marshawn, with conditions that punch list items are satisfactorily completed. Seconded by Commissioner Barrow. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number nine, public hearing to consider the following simple division of property with variance. Mark and Deborah Pierce Property, lot CC one, CC two.
Representing the Pierce family on the following simple division with a variance. Some comments were made, were addressed and corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
Any questions, comments? No questions, comments. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Questions, comments from commissioners?
The motion to approve because it meets the requirements for a simple division with a variance.
Motion by Commissioner Barrow for approval.
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Bari. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Committee report, subdivision ordinance committee.
We did not meet this month, last month, because, I forget why. Ben couldn't get our stuff ready, I think. He was so busy working on this agenda, I think he didn't have time to get our stuff ready. But we are gonna try something new. Beverly and I are the only ones attending the subdivision subcommittee meeting, and Julio and Alan are the only ones meeting in the zoning subcommittee meeting. So we decided we're gonna hold the subcommittee, our subcommittee meeting after theirs. So they're gonna be at eight o'clock, we're gonna be at nine o'clock on the last Friday morning of the month. And we're gonna try this and see how it works. And we're just gonna continue moving forward, working on the items we've been working on. Hopefully Ben will have some ready for us. Sorry, don't mean to put you on the spot.
Got another guy with us now, so.
Okay.
Delegation, I like that.
All the work's off your shoulders now, Ben.
Thank you, Sherri. Strategic planning. I'll ask Mr. Compton, because I think he was there. Doing a fine job, I might say.
The strategic planning committee hasn't had a whole lot of new ideas coming from them, but what we are gonna be doing here soon is, we've got at least a half a dozen items that, as they come out of this commission, I will be bringing to strategic planning. So I think the function that strategic planning used to have, where they would present items and then they'd come back this way, it's not really flowing in that direction anymore. We're bringing a heck of a lot more towards them that then goes to the council. So we may not even need to talk about strategic planning anymore, because they're not really directing us to work on anything.
Good, very good. And like I say, if you need us to, you know, appear, for whatever reason, I mean, I think, just reach out to us, and I'll delegate somebody to go. No, I'll be happy to go if you need me. I used to go, and it kind of faded away, and I think it's back, and I like the direction it's going, so. Not that I had a problem with it before, but I think it's got some good agenda items. Thank you. Old business, Larry Jumanville Property, lots three A one, three A two, three A three, family partition. Yes, sir. I think we had public hearing on this already, did we? Tony, do we need to have a public hearing, or, since it's old business, I don't.
If you advertise for it, I'll work just to make sure.
Did we advertise for public?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It doesn't say that here, I just wanna make sure we don't neglect that. Okay.
Representing Mr. Jumanville on the following family partition. Asking the commission for approval. One change that was made on this one is, we showed where the bridge location was in relationship to the Severio Canal, but pretty much everything pretty much stayed the same.
All right.
And Ben, that was the only item we needed clarified, wasn't it?
Right, but there was a line type issue that made it unclear, and they clarified that, but also at the last meeting, the issue about where the bridge was located came up, and so that was added subsequently.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Hearing none. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nance, seconded by Commissioner Wells. Any opposition? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Item number eleven B, CF Industries. And if you want to speak on this, Tony, or do you?
My name is William LeBlanc. I'm with the law firm, Adugal LeBlanc and Mirror, and we represent CF. I understand there were some questions about this at the last meeting. What this is, is adding an industrial area to already an existing industrial area that CF owns. They acquired some new property, and they want to include this like they had prior, with your permission and the permission of the parish council to get as an industrial area. What it basically means is CF will be in charge of construction and cleaning of streets, street lighting, sewer, sewer works, water service, garbage pickup, and fire protection. Any existing taxes for any taxing authorities will continue to be paid. They'll be exempt from any new authorities or new taxes, and CF will be responsible for doing all the subjects I just talked about.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions?
I have a question for Ricky. I don't see it this month, but I believe last month there was a recommendation for approval, wasn't there? Does staff recommend approval?
Yes.
I also talked to President Martinez, and he has no objection to this also, just for information.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any other comments, questions, my commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Barrow, seconded by Commissioner Bari. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number eleven C, Donaldsonville Technology and Industrial Park, first filing.
Representing Donaldsonville Industrial Board for Donaldsonville Technology Industrial Park Phase One, our firm has prepared the final plat that you guys are looking at. That is all that we were involved in, so I am not authorized to answer any questions on the road or the construction or design of the road, but I believe there is a representative here from GSA who did, back when it was built, they were the engineer in charge of the design and construction of the road. But any questions on the plat, I can answer for you guys, or try to.
Okay. Any questions, comments, my commissioners?
Ben, your concerns, did you go out and look at this, or have all your concerns been addressed?
The preliminary concerns have all been addressed. They're putting a maintenance bond in place, which will protect the parish if, at the end of that maintenance bond period, we go out and review, and if there are any failures in the road, then that'll cover the repair of those items. But the sewer treatment plant, which was in the right of way, they provided a hold harmless agreement for the parish, which was reviewed by legal and approved, and then the revisions to the final plat were made that were of concern before.
Okay, so you're satisfied with everything that they've done?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward, you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. Public hearing is closed. Any other additional comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Marshawn, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number twelve.
Motion.
Out there. We are adjourned.